Okay. I would like to call to order the September 28th meeting of the Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission. The first order of business is the approval of the minutes of September 14th, which was in your packet.
I'll make the motion approve.
Okay. Motion and second. Any other comments? All in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? For correspondence.
The only thing I have is that I did talk to Les McDonald about the multimodal transportation plan presentation, and he is able to come to that November meeting date. I think it was November 8th that we decided on, so we'll mark that on your calendars, and he'll be coming to that meeting.
Okay, I believe I will be back on the 8th. Any other items of correspondence? Transportation Commission met on the 22nd, and the main item of discussion was the complete streets statement. The process of developing that document is proceeding, and Les will presumably also talk about that when he meets with us. If I actually see a complete draft of a statement, I'll circulate it to this commission also.
On the complete streets, have you, now, if you've spent maybe a little more time than we have, do you have just a little layman's view of what you think that really means, or are we just flashing around a shiny flag? Do you, I mean, do you get a sense that there's some reality to it?
I think it, well, basically, I think we're doing a pretty good job at the moment of focusing on complete streets, on this commission and the transportation commission. I think that it could be useful to codify it a little bit more, and it's probably even more useful in terms of things that one can put in grant applications and so on, as a certification that we are in fact supportive of.
To me, I'm a little worried that it's going to be just like the word sustainability. Well, of course, we have to say sustainability, write it on our forehead, even though whether we really know that we're sustainable or can promise it, and so for, there are just words that come along that, in the planning profession, I've been through several of them in the last 20 years.
Me too.
And complete street seems to be the new kid on the block. And I think I get it a little bit, but I just am not sure that doing it is the same as, though I think Main Street is a very complete street, I would, I feel really like that's a, I don't know where your best examples are when you talk about it.
Well, and we, of course, have some bad examples of streets that are quite incomplete.
Sure.
And a statement that we intend to, as time goes on, as renovations are made, as things are done, we will attempt to make them complete.
It seems like, to you, that the whole concept is a lot more concrete, so to speak, than something like sustainability, you know, it's a really, it's a, you know, it's a fairly clear set of standards to.
One can at least document the continuity of sidewalks and the presence of marked bike lanes and the.
No, I would agree with that. I think that's a good comment, Kirk.
Well, obviously, this is a discussion that will go on in this commission and in the transportation commission over the next few meetings. The difficult part is the question of what degree of renovation triggers the upgrade to completeness, and that's, you know, does a chip seal, or does what we just did to Third Street? So, we'll be talking about that. The next meeting of the transportation commission is the 12th of October, I believe.
That would be our meeting day, it should maybe be the 13th.
Okay, if it's the 13th, if it's the 13th, I'm on my way to Southeast Asia on the 13th, so I will miss that.
And our, just a reminder, our meeting's canceled on the 12th.
The next item on our agenda is open microphone. Anything you want to say? No. Open microphone is a time for members of the public to speak to the commission regarding matters that are not on the agenda, are not currently pending before the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, anyone watching on TV, if you have something to say to the commission, come on down, we'll listen to you. Item number six, nonconformities draft ordinance. You had a copy of the current draft in the packet.
So, we'd gone over this last time. The only change was, I think that everything looked good to the commission, the only change was the, when we were talking about the ability to go through a conditional use permit in order to enlarge or alter using the same zoning nonconformities. So, under nonconforming structures, I had proposed that we limit that to 50% of the existing floor area of the existing structure. We had some discussion about that, and the commission ended up directing me to take that out. So, that's the only change I've really made to the document. You know, I, now that you've had some time to think about it, you know, I wanted to maybe just reiterate the fact that, you know, you have an existing structure, and that's going to be treated differently than a new structure. So, if you're, you know, you have a new structure and you're building that, and you have to meet all the setback requirements, there's really no conditional use permit process that you can go through in order to have the setback reduced. So, that would say that for, you know, any existing structure that currently doesn't meet certain, you know, specific setback requirements, you could go through a conditional use permit and expand that structure through that process. And so, we'd be treating new versus pre-existing nonconforming structures a little bit differently. So, just wanted to, you know, and I'm fine with that, just wanted to, now that you've had some time to think about it, just wanted to make sure that, you know, that was the direction we wanted to go.
So, and each individual case will be on its own basis, right?
It will, yeah. The Board of Adjustment will review each individual circumstance differently and conduct a public hearing, so all the neighbors within 600 feet will have the opportunity to weigh in and be published in the paper. So, really, anybody from the public can come and, you know, be for, against it, or general testimony, just like any public hearing. So, you know, I guess it'd give it the opportunity for, you know, certain circumstances where you have maybe a small building and you want to do a larger addition, not to be restricted by the, you know, some percentage that we put on there. You know, that 50% was largely.
Or not guaranteed that, I mean, that's what I was worrying about, just, it was like you were guaranteed to do that 50%, and maybe neighbor doesn't want that. That's kind of what I was going on.
No, it was more of, you still had to go through the conditional use permit, but you were only able to achieve 50% of the floor area. So, it just wasn't that you could automatically expand, you still had to go through the public hearing process.
It did seem to me, too, like the variety of cases where you've got this nonconformance is going to be different enough, it seems like it's getting ahead of the horse to put a percentage on it, knowing that until you see, okay, what is this, and we presume that the Board of Adjustment will have a chance to look at the realistic, on-the-ground thing. Because we looked at this particular example, but this is a unique example that clearly only happens in several places in town, and I don't know what the next.
It's basically older buildings where standards relative to how they're constructed have changed through time.
Yeah, I guess that the majority of the structures that you're likely to see some type of addition on probably won't meet the 50%, but in unique circumstances like this, where it may make sense, you know, to not restrict it to the 50%.
You see these unusual cases, typically, that these come up in an unusual thing, and I don't know, I'm just being amazed in, I'm doing a little construction at our, at our house, and I needed to know where the lot line was, and I've been having a really hard time finding it. The engineering department hasn't been able to help me very much because Third Street was an 80-foot right-of-way when it hit Hayes, and then it just sat there for quite a number of years. And when they decided to push Third on past Hayes, they went down to a 60-foot right-of-way. Now, when you have a 60-foot, an 80-foot moving to a 60-foot, do you put the 60-foot in the middle of the 80? Do you put it on this side, or do you put it on this side? There's three ways you could go, or someplace in between. And what's gonna, what's happening is that, so I'm just thinking about unique things that happen over time, and then you try and make sense of it, because on my side of the street, the sidewalk is 15 feet inside city property. On the other side of the street, sidewalk isn't even on city property. The sidewalk is actually on private property. So, the 60, for 80-60 thing, just, clearly no one, I'm not sure what happened there, but one presumes that the, a couple buildings were built, our house was built, very old, and then the next house across the street was built, and then when they decide, and apparently, they didn't punch Third through until reasonably late, maybe at sometime in the 20s or something, or 30s. And so, and they, and I guess that's only a simple, an example of saying, these nonconforming things happen because of these odd things, and you really need to just look them over to try and make a rule about it, it's probably really tricky.
Sure. Just like, just to make sure I understand this, so we're, with your 50% language, you would not be able to expand it by more than 50%, period?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Correct.
And so, what we're doing by taking off that 50% is that we are allowing people to go bigger, so long as they can make it fly past a conditional use permit.
Right.
Correct. Yeah, they would still be going through the same process regardless, it's just the previous language would restrict the addition to what they could achieve through going through the conditional use permit.
You looked at that little building.
To 50%, so, you know, if they wanted to continue the zero setback to the south here, they could go to the conditional use permit through the Board of Adjustment, but they would only be able to continue that for half of the existing building, so it would only be able to go here.
You think that that building could be three times as big as it is right now, and they've still got plenty of space in the back for parking, so it's, it's unique.
Yeah. I would think it's, yeah, that it's probably going to be a rare enough situation that, you know, I'm okay with trusting the judgment of the Board of Adjustments, you know, for those odd situations where it actually does come up. They at least can make the argument.
Well, are we ready for a motion, or is there further discussion?
I'll make the motion to accept it, or to recommend we send it to the City Council, is that what we do?
Well, we don't have a public hearing, we'll be scheduling for public hearing in the second meeting in October, so that's the first one we can make. So, if everything looks good, I'll go ahead and schedule it, and then we'll have the public hearing then.
Okay. So, did you need a second?
I don't think so, I think we just.
I don't think we need a motion.
You don't need a motion.
We don't need a motion. Staff is directed to prepare it for public hearing. The next item on our agenda is the use table. It's a very pretty table. It's been some time trying to understand it.
You can thank Becky and our department for that. This is, the use table we've been working on, I think I had gone through a presentation at the end of last year about the work that we've been doing to really put the zoning districts, all the uses into one succinct use table, to be able to cross-reference instead of having to go to each individual zone. So, I think everybody here has probably seen the presentation, so I'll just go through it and just, you know, it's been a year, we're pretty much on the verge of completing it. I think we have a point where we're comfortable with it, and so, we're planning on taking it through the commission now, and we'll go through it and then take a look, see if you have any questions, and then probably give you some homework, since we're going to miss a meeting, to take a look through, you know, a little, a little bit more refined look, and then come back with maybe some questions about uses in certain zones at our next meeting in, end of October.
Is this, this table is supposed to reflect the current state of the narrative, so.
It doesn't. We, I think we, I can get that to you, and that probably would be helpful. We've gone through and made some changes. They're really minor changes to a lot of things, but we have had some, you know, there were some uses that maybe weren't allowed in certain zones, and there was a question, well, why isn't that use allowed in that zone? And so, we've gone through and made some of those changes, but I will, I didn't include the existing snapshot of what we currently have in the code, that probably would be helpful, so I'll go and send that out in the next day or two. Yeah, and so you can compare, you know, back and forth, any changes that we're going to be making. So, you know, right now, to go through this, our current zoning code's in narrative format. We have, and the reason, or the problem it creates is that we've got these inconsistencies when you go through, and throughout time, there's been code amendments, and maybe they are just for one zone, and so now you have some issues with some inconsistencies between the kind of defined terms at the back of the zoning code and the use terms that are underneath each zone. We really have no, I guess, outside reference to assist with determinations of use allowance or comparable uses, and that would be the NIACS industrial classification system, which is nationally recognized. This is kind of the standard by the, you know, recognition wide in order to classify business establishments. And so, you know, the nice thing about this is we'd able, we would be able to tie the NIACS definitions to the uses, and then, you know, you could go pretty much anywhere in the country, and you'd run into the same use, same definition through those areas. So, it's, you know, a nice universal definition database in order to, you know, implement into our zoning code. So, this is just a snapshot of what, you know, kind of the structure that we currently have. It's all in, like I said, narrative format, we've got all the zones, this happens to be the Ag Force Zone, usually goes through an intent section, and then it goes through the permitted principal uses, conditional uses, and special uses, and then it goes through kind of minimum lot area, a lot with requirements, other special requirements of that zoning district, and so, you know, you see the issue here with, you know, for instance, home occupations, well, those are really allowed in all residential zones for the most part, and so, you've got all these redundancies from, you know, zone to zone where it carries over the same language, and so you end up with a zoning code that, you know, for those two residential and commercial chapters, ends up being maybe a quarter inch thick when it could be four or five pages for a table. And so, you know, we're moving to make it a lot easier for us and the public and the commission and everybody else to use. This is just one example of some terms, you know, we have definitions for professional office, but it just varies from zone to zone, so residential office, neighborhood business, this is really how we define the use of professional office in this zone. So, it goes through, you know, through a lot of detail as to what that is and maybe what it isn't, includes beauty and barber shops, graphic artists, photo studios, then you jump to central business, general business, urban mix, commercial, a lot more, I guess, simplified in general, doesn't include as much detail, but really, we're talking about the same thing here. R4, little bit different variation on what that is. We do restrict that to 2,000 square feet of floor area for R4, which is a residential, you know, multifamily zone, just require it to be in harmony with adjoining residential uses. And then we flip to the back of the zoning code and look at the definition, and it, you know, has a lot of those same terms that are used in some of the other uses, but then again, it's different than the rest as well. And so, you have an issue with, well, it's a professional office, you know, meets the definition, but it doesn't meet maybe the examples that are provided underneath the zone, and so it just causes confusion. So, that's, you know, just kind of an example of what we're looking at correcting. And this is another example, restaurants, urban mix, commercial, we've got, you know, a number of uses that are grouped within kind of the restaurant use, neighborhood business, you have restaurants that fall under retail sales, personal services, and so it's just really all over the board right now. I mean, there's no consistency between, you know, the different zones of what constitutes a either professional office or, you know, a restaurant. And then we don't define it at the back of the zoning code, and so, you know, it's, it's tough when you don't have a definition to fall back on as to when you have, you know, maybe some variations of, you know, places that may serve food and whether or not they are restaurants or not, it's hard to, you know, stand up to when, you know, you may have, you know, may have a challenge. So, you know, with this proposed use matrix, we really just wanted to make those terms consistent, have the side-by-side comparison of the districts, really clean the list of terms to be defined, so refine those down in the NIACS terms, help us do that, make a more compact document. And so, this is really what we've come up with. We have the header there, this is for residential uses. You can see these are all the residential uses that we allow, including, you know, starting with accessory dwelling unit. PA is the acronym for accessory use, permitted accessory use. P is permitted use, C is conditional use permit, and if it's left blank, that means it's not, not allowed. So, we've gone away from, you know, we talked before about special uses and conditional uses and how they were really the same thing. I think Joel brought up that at one point, special uses went to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and conditional uses went to the Board of Adjustment. Well, that's since been changed, and now both of them just go to the Board of Adjustment, but they, you know, same criteria, same requirements and everything. So, we had just eliminated special uses and brought all the ones that were special uses and called them conditional uses now, and so that's what we've done there to, you know, that simplifies things.
Refresh my memory about what's, what's the difference between a permitted use and a permitted accessory use?
Permitted use is really just maybe a standalone use on the property, so it'd be like a single-family dwelling. A permitted accessory use would be a garage, so it's something accessory to a permitted use. So, usually you have, you know, with a single-family dwelling, you've got a, maybe a detached garage, maybe a garden shed, you know, things of that nature would be accessory structures. And so, well, like accessory dwelling units, that's how we differentiated between maybe an apartment and an accessory dwelling unit, was it was intended to be accessory to a single-family dwelling, and then we had the restrictions on there to, you know, further restrict it, and so that it, you know, really wasn't an apartment, it's a accessory dwelling unit.
And is it, is being a separate structure part of that, or is it just simply that it's accessory to a permitted unit somehow?
Well, the way, yeah, it's just that it's accessory to the permitted use.
So, your permitted accessory use could be in the basement, or?
Yeah. Well, the way our code defines it is that, yeah, except garages are accessory structures, even if they're attached or detached. So, when we have the restrictions that limit them to 1,000 square feet in size, that would apply to ones that are attached or detached, so it really could apply to both of them.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we've, you know, you've got all the zones at the top, all the way from farm ranch, all the way to the commercial zones, we've gone through and, you know, listed, and many of these, I don't think any of these have changed. These are what they currently are right now for residential uses, it's just some of the commercial uses are, you know, have, we've reviewed those and amended those a little bit. But as you can see, you know, some of these, if you recall from just past ordinances and working with the zoning code, we have certain requirements for certain, you know, we've crafted some of the ordinances such that depending upon what use you have in a certain zone, there could be special requirements, and so that's what we've done with the footnotes here. So, this, for instance, accessory dwelling unit with the, the number there goes to the, you go to the bottom of the table, and then that, you know, would let you know in the footnote section that subject to specific use standards within section, we don't know which section it's going to be in with the revised zoning code, so we've left that blank, but, yeah, points you to the specific use standards within the zoning code. So, all the uses that would have specific standards, it's going to point you to somewhere else in the code and cross-reference that, and so you don't just say that, well, it's just permitted as an accessory use and there's no limitations on it. And so, that's how we've carried over a lot of those, you know, just, I guess, the distinctions between the uses and the certain zones, that's how we've carried, you know, those same requirements over is through the use of the footnotes and the numbers there. So, you know, now, we have dwellings in residential zones, we decided to draw distinction between dwellings in residential and dwellings in commercial, because now, you know, we've gone through quite a few amendments to allow residential and commercial zones now. I don't think there's a commercial zone that you can't have some type of residential, you know, regardless of what process you go through, maybe it's a conditional use permit. And so, we thought it would, it would be a lot cleaner in order to, you know, when we did, did this originally, I think that we were trying to group them all underneath one category and not try to separate them out, you know, for the residential and the commercial, and it was just getting too complicated, it seemed. And so, we've done it this way to divide them out, dwellings in residential, and then we just got the reference to see below, and then you've got the dwellings in commercial, and I think it's a lot cleaner that way. And then we go through, you know, like Kurt was asking, the garages and workshops, you know, and where those are allowed or where they're not, and mobile home parks. So, that's the residential section. This is the, and, you know, for instance, this is all, the NIACS terms are all really related to businesses, so there's no, we'll come up with our own definitions of all these uses and probably just carry over what we currently have. I think that those are probably sufficient, but we'll be reviewing those at the same time. You see the NIACS terms come in when you, when you start to have a lot of these business uses, and so, this gets into the non-residential section, and, you know, I'm not going to go through all of these, but this is, you know, I'll count on you to take a look at it over the next month. I'll send out, like I mentioned, the, what we were starting from and highlight kind of the things that we've, we've changed since we started looking at it, but, you know, a lot of these things, we've figured out. But, you know, a lot of these things, we've figured out the NIACs terms for. Some of them we just don't, we don't have a NIAC terms for, so we'll have to rely on our own definition of that as we go through it. But for the most of them, we'd be able to find NIACs terminology and been able to cross-reference that. So that's worked out.
So you asked me a question, since there wasn't a definition for restaurants, did NIAC have one then that you're going to use?
I believe so, yeah. Yeah.
722, pardon me.
Yep. So, you know, just an example, like educational services. So right now, we, I think, list a number of educational institutions, and these would all be grouped under one category. So, you know, if you notice the terms, some of these are really specific, the larger the number you have. And so, you know, those are kind of subterms within a master subset. So you'll have like educational services, 611. They'll all have the first three numbers and then they'll further define those. And so what we're able to do here in these circumstances where we've gone through and individually listed these, so if you go to amusement and recreation facilities privately owned, they'll be the master number, but then there'll be a number of individuals listed. When we've gone and broken these out, that means maybe there was a number of them that weren't uses that were going to be compatible or maybe uses that we weren't going to see in Moscow. And so we've, you know, that's how we use the NIACs term, but eliminate some of the subheadings underneath those. And so, you know, if we didn't want to allow technical and trade schools in town, we wouldn't just say educational services, we'd actually list all of these and then just remove the ones that we didn't want. And so that's what we've done with the ones that you see these larger numbers on, is that they're usually broken out from a master term that is, you know, kind of an umbrella that's covering the rest of these terms that are under it. So this is just an example of educational services. Gives you a definition, an example, and it's pretty detailed. So it's, you know, good because it takes out kind of the gray area a lot of times with, you know, when you make definitions up yourself. So it's really helpful. We covered the notes section, but, you know, these are all pretty much specific to a lot of the zones, so that's the way we've done that. This is something we didn't have last time. These are bulk and dimensional requirements. So then, you know, once again, these are all underneath each individual zone. We've taken all of these and put them in one succinct table, so you can easily go through and say, I want a townhouse in the R3 zone, what's the minimum lot size? You know, it comes through at 2,000 square feet in size. And so it, you know, it does the same thing only for bulk and dimensional standards. So, you know, we've been working on that as well. And so we've got quite a few of these. We've got some limitations on uses table as well that we've created. I haven't attached that to the packet tonight, but this is the work we've done. Comes through it, add minimum setback requirements, exceptions to minimum setbacks listed above. So there's specific requirements there. So you, you know, you don't have to go to the individual zone, you can just look at the one table and figure out what your setbacks are, what your minimum lot size is and what your minimum lot width is in one place instead of having to dig into the zoning code and be able to find that. So. And then once again, we've kind of done the numbering to draw distinctions between, you know, certain zones have certain requirements. And so we've put those sub-numbers in in order to be able to, you know, draw those distinctions. We've carried most of the ones we currently have over. We haven't really changed any of those. So those should be the same as what's currently in the zoning code. And that's it.
Comments?
Yeah, I, you know, this is kind of the overall format. I don't want to bore you with all the details.
This will go, not in lieu of, but as, this will be another way of looking at, or is this going to replace?
This is going to replace?
All that chit-chat?
Yeah. This is going to replace the narrative format. So this is going to replace that. So we'll likely still have, you know, maybe one chapter with all the zones. We still need like the intent statements.
Right.
So, you know, we'll get a purpose statement and an intent statement, and there may be a couple other things, but, so there still will be some, you know, kind of form of a narrative for each zone, but it'll largely be replaced with the table, so.
But you'll still have the definitions.
Yeah, the definitions will all be at, you know, right now, we have them in chapter 11 and that's where we go through all the definitions. Those will still all be there. So we'll need to define all that and then, so we're going to update that at the same time, so.
Yeah, I love this. For me especially, this is so much easier to read than trying to ferret out the information out of it.
Yeah.
You know, really, you see glance for, RTO just stands out to me, for example, of all the things. I know there's been discussion about changes that may be made, but it is so clear now that that's kind of a unique or a standalone sort of a thing and it just bam, it's there. So, yeah, I like this. This is good. My only other question is that are there any potential legal issues with respect to challenges to any of this? Their narratives are kind of what everybody's always been focused on with respect to any legal challenges. Will Rod spend some time at least commenting on whether or not he feels that the city can legally defend any issues with respect to a table versus the narrative that's all listed out? I don't know if that's making any sense, but.
Yeah, you know, usually we send these over to Rod for review prior to, you know, advancing on. So he'll be able to review all of this, but I think it'll, you know, regardless of whether it's in the narrative format or the table format, I think you end up with kind of the same thing. I think it's going to help things with the NIACs terms in order to define those better. But, you know, there's always a little bit of gray area regardless of whatever you do. You know, somebody's always coming up with something that you hadn't thought of. And so, you know, it gives the zoning administrator some flexibility in order to interpret the code. And then, you know, if somebody doesn't like the interpretation, they're always eligible to appeal that and to have the board of adjustment, you know, take a look at it and issue their own interpretation. So we've got some safety valves there to.
Yeah, I agree with Kurt. This is great.
Is this a common format that is used by other cities?
It is. I think we may be one of the few that doesn't have it in this format. Most of them have gone to, you know, usually, from what I've seen is they have multiple tables depending upon, you know, where you're at in the zoning code. I think we've done a little bit more combining than you typically see, but I think it's better just because you go to one place and it's all there instead of having to still sort through the code to find the table you're looking for. So, but yeah, most of them have gone to the table format, at least for the use tables. So it'll be good.
And that probably then addresses the legal question if it's widely used, the table format.
Two pretty minor things is just, you may be planning on this already, put the column header at the top of every page.
Yeah.
So you don't flip back and forth trying to figure out where you are.
Yeah.
And then the other one is, I think it would be good to attach something that says FR means farm ranch, you know, stands for farm ranch.
Yeah.
Yeah. And all of the, you know, all the acronyms.
Yeah, that probably, we could, yeah, we define what, you know, permitted uses, conditional uses, but we don't list out all the zones. So, yeah, that's a, that's a good idea.
Yeah, I, it took me quite a while to find the black bar at the top about what that was. I guess I was wondering whether there isn't some other format and maybe a format that explains a little bit more about what the items are at the beginning of the table.
Okay.
Yeah, what permitted use means, what permitted accessory.
Okay.
Yeah, just a sentence or two.
Do you think there has been any change in use of the residential and commercial uses? Do you see, in your education and working here, do you see any shift in that? Or do you think typically the smaller the town, the less number of uses there are? And it goes up till New York City is loaded with many uses. But have you seen any, in your own experience, any shift in that? I mean, the R1, R2, R3, R4. We, I think we've shifted that a little bit in my 25 years.
I think R1 used to be bigger. R1 used to be bigger lots.
But I just wondered if you're seeing any, or is it fair to say, can we just presume that the longer we have bureaucracies, the more complicated they will get? Don't you, in other words, we hire brilliant people like you to work and then next thing you know, it's, you know, it's, the system is there. I'm just, I'm just, it was just a rhetorical, more or less a rhetorical question. When I, as I'm getting ready to go back to New York, it puts New York on my mind, but I used to, in our urban theory class, show students, you know, okay, here's Moscow's list, here's Portland's list of zones, here's New York's list. Boom! You know, and they have stuff going on in New York that we've never imagined. With guys like Donald Trump around, you get lots of unusual projects happening. And so it's a, it's a different thing. But I just was wondering if you see any shift in?
Well, it, yeah, I mean, as technology advances, you definitely see, or trends, you know, advance, you definitely see a shift. I mean, at one point in time, we didn't have twin homes, townhouses in our code. You know, that's kind of a recent addition, which is a great addition, you know? I mean, it's, twin homes probably been the best thing that we've done as far as a use in a long time, just because, you know, you don't see people building duplexes anymore. They're building twin homes because there's so many advantages to them. And then townhouses as well, you know? It'd be nice to get some more townhouse developments.
I think in using, getting rid of the word duplex is really important to us because people freak out with a duplex in a town, a twin home, oh, yeah, it looks good. You know, and so just by renaming it.
Yeah, I mean, you see some uses that you, you know, you have a hard time trying to classify. I guess one of them is dog daycares. You know? It's not children's daycare. It's not a, it's similar to a kennel, but not really because there could be not be overnight boarding. So, you know, yeah, every once in a while, you get one like that, that you really have to, you know, try to make it fit or think about where, you know, under what use it fits within the code. And, you know, I mean, to us, you know, the zoning code does provide some flexibility in allowing for us to make an interpretation that if it, you know, is more aligned with a particular use, that we can just fit it within that use. And usually it's underneath the kennel, you know, dog kenneling and that type of operation. So they've really just been limited to motor business type areas just because of that. But, yeah, I mean, it's one thing that you see pop up and I think a lot of people want those in more, you know, rural areas, maybe ag forest or on the edge of town because, you know, it seems like it would make sense. But it's tough, you know, when the city ends up growing past those areas and maybe you have residential subdivisions, you know, it ends up creating a nuisance. I don't know that people want to live next to, you know, a bunch of barking dogs on all things. So you really got to think about, you know, what the uses.
I thought everybody lived next to a parking lot, barking dogs. I mean, obviously, another kind of dog.
Commercially barking dogs.
Oh, right, right.
Well, it seems like, you know, the complexity of the code is going to be inevitable with growth just because of the sheer volume of stuff that's going on. And the other one is like you're talking about, and there's going to be smaller things that come along that, you know, 20 years ago, nobody thought of.
Yeah.
And I think the biggest thing is that, you know, it's good enough if 95% of the stuff that comes up slots easily into the code and then you somehow have the flexibility built in for that, for that under 5% that you can, you can make a reasonable decision with public input.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we have a portion of the code that allows us that, you know, with advances in technology, allows us to process something through a conditional use permit, as long as it's similar to a use within the code. It may not fit perfectly, so we couldn't say that it is that use, but it's, you know, similar operating characteristics as that allows us to run it through a conditional use permit. So like, for instance, wind turbines, you know, I mean, we haven't really had to deal with them a whole lot. We would, you know, smaller scale ones that would be similar to an antenna on a house, we could just say that that's kind of an architectural projection, like a chimney. And, but, you know, you get into a larger scale, and I know at one point when they were pretty popular, when people were, you know, watching the Home and Garden Channel and seeing, you know, people installing private wind turbines on their properties, we thought maybe we'd have to address that one if somebody wanted to build a 15-foot or 20-foot tall one in their backyard. But, you know, I think everybody researched that and figured out there wasn't enough wind, at least here in town, in order to be able to make that work. And so, you know, we could still process that through, you know, that venue of a conditional use permit. But like Whitman County, you know, they had to amend their ordinance to allow, you know, put restrictions on them and allow them because, you know, 20 years ago, they didn't have them, but now there's a big demand in order for that energy.
Oh, we spent quite a bit of time coming up with a classification for cell phone towers.
Yeah, another one.
And the LED signs, that was kind of interesting, just a totally new technology that had some surprises to it.
I've had several people ask me whether this commission is thinking about tiny houses. Read several articles recently on 100-square-foot houses for basically affordable housing, homeless housing.
Do we have a minimum house size?
Well, it's the building, it's the building code that determines that. And so, you know, underneath our adopted building code, I think it's somewhere around 270 square feet. So it's pretty small. I mean, it's right around where what you're seeing a majority of these are. You know, we would allow a tiny home development in town. We don't restrict them. You know, the issues that come into play are when they're manufactured off-site and brought on-site because we have to declare that a manufactured home. And so within the zoning code, we have for manufactured homes, which are a little bit different than mobile homes, we have a certain, so a manufactured home could go on any lot in town, is the way our zoning code reads unless it's, I think, a historic district. And, but there's certain requirements, that it be at least 1,000 square feet in size, that have a foundation, that's not exposed more than 12 inches above grade, that you have roofing siding material. So, you know, we have, we have an issue there. If you were to stick build it on-site, put a foundation on it and all that, you could do that today. And you could build it to the minimum of the, what the zoning or the building code allows you to do it. If you had a R4 lot, R3 lot where we allow multiple structures on a single piece of property, presumably you could build multiple ones and do a tiny home development. You could go through the PUD process in order to do a tiny home development. What really comes into play is the manufacturing of them. It is really when it starts to become an issue. A lot of them are on wheels where they show up so they can be moved. Well, we would say that's an RV. And, you know, it would meet our definition of an RV and so you would, which would be great, you could have a RV park, but our RV park code restricts you to six months out of the year. out of the year. So most of the time, people want to live in it year-round. They don't want to, you know, move it to another park after six months type thing.
So how would, how would it slide into a mobile home park?
Well, that is, you know, that's, I think, the most attractive to people, because, you know, really what makes them cost prohibitive when you stick build them on a piece of property is that each one has to be separately metered and run individual utilities to each tiny home. With a mobile home park configuration, there's one main that goes through the development, and then they all have private lines that tie off. There's, you know, maybe different electrical meters, but I think they're all on one water meter, and so they just, the park management just charges us a flat rate every month for sewer water fees.
Part of your lock.
And that makes them a lot cheaper and cost-effective, so. But the issue is defining it as a mobile home and having it, you know, I don't think it'd be an issue for us to define it as a mobile home, but in order to manufacture it off-site, you have to have a HUD stamp in order to put it in a mobile home park. Well, there's, you know, not very many of those that we know of unless you go through, there's like a separate program with Idaho Division of Building Safety, where you could, you know, jump through a bunch of hoops in order to be a manufacturer of these. And so, you know, a lot of these, you see people want to build them themselves, or, you know, buy them from a company that don't have the HUD stamp for the mobile home, and so there's a bunch of complications kind of at the state level and the federal level for this, if you want to treat them as a mobile home. Now, if you wanted to, like I said, stick build it onsite, have your own water sewer, you know, connections, you can do that today. If you wanted to go through a PUD and have, you know, all the separate water sewer with the meters and everything, you can do that today. It's just the, the way of going about it and treating it as a mobile home type development and getting away from all those individual meters and all those individual sewer lines that connect to the main, that's really the, where it becomes an issue, is just the cost of all the connections to the utilities and everything when you stick build it, so.
Joel, I think, my view of Idaho, after spending time on the East Coast, the reason, I mean, big cities are, talk about some of those kinds of things, but we take care, and maybe we don't do a good job of it, but we by and large have ways to live cheaply in Idaho. We have so much land and trailer, or I built a thing that you can bring in on wheels. It's just, it's shockingly inexpensive that people in New York or Philadelphia, they've never heard of trailer houses. It isn't even, I think 15% of the Idaho population are living in one of these, in something that looks like a mobile home, whether you call it a building, a factory or not. And it offers a very inexpensive way to, you don't even have to pay a lot of money for foundations if you don't really want to, and it's surprising how many people, all you have to do is drive to St. Mary's and just count them. I mean, you know, through the forest and the land, and all the people that are living in rather less costly kind of a place, and it allows people who don't make a lot of money to still survive in a, in a, in a kind of a reasonable way. So in some ways, I think it's a mobile home that have kind of solved our problem, and it seems like some of those folks living in one of those things, they can afford three or four all-terrain vehicles, and I can't even afford one. You know, if you own a home and are paying a mortgage, you know, you don't have enough money for a all-terrain vehicle, maybe.
Is that a microphone live?
It's a, it's an intriguing, I think, I think it's a, it's a pretty, I don't, I don't even, people don't talk about it much, but I think it's a way, it makes Idaho and Wyoming and Montana be real attractive places to people who may not be making a lot of money, but you can, you know, with a mobile home, it's, I used to complain about them years ago. I used to think it was a bad deal, but I've had friends who say, you know, they live light on the land, they don't mess anything up much. If you want to take, when the mobile home rusts out, you can just take it down to the dump and get rid of it, and the land's still there. You know, you haven't messed anything up. And so it's kind of a neat solution that we just, I can fall into, and it allows us not to think about tiny homes.
So, and it's, it's other big thing, too, is just in terms of affordable housing, you know, if you can, if you can get 20,000 bucks worth of credit, or come up with 20,000 bucks, you know, you can get, not a palace, but it's a reasonable place to live.
Well, instead of renting, I mean, you can own, you know, own one if you're going to college, you know, gives you a, not an investment to say that you're not throwing away your money on rent, it's going towards something that you'd be able to sell in the future and recoup what you put into it. So it, you know, definitely serves a need in our area.
What we read about in the magazines is often, comes from someplace that's entirely different than the place that we live. I was embarrassed to be, of course, this is 15 years ago, but I got to the point where I could, I would be embarrassed to mention to anybody in New York City the small amount of money that I made as a person in Idaho, you know, and I was, I didn't realize how poor I was. But when I got to New York, you know, it seemed like people were teaching in the first grade were making 75,000 a year, you know, in New York and Connecticut, and it's an entirely different structure.
We're also paying 3,000 for rent.
5,000 for rent.
Yeah.
What's the path forward on the table?
Well, like I said, I'm going to give you some homework. I'll send out, you know, like we talked about, some of the changes, you know, to highlight the changes that we had made to the uses, and I just want you to go through and take a look at it, and if anything, you know, looks out of the ordinary, if you have questions, just mark them down, and we'll bring it back at the second meeting in October and talk about it a little bit more detail.
What's that date in our government?
I think Ann had to help you out.
26?
26?
It was a 12, I was for my 14 days.
Yep, 26.
26?
I think you guys did a great job with that.
One little comment as we get out of here. I had been thinking about reading the, paying attention to the intermodal thing, and I don't know, as we have readings, Catherine was kind enough to loan me her copy. I'm going to be out of commission for the next month, traveling and doing other things. If somebody else would like to use it for a month, feel free. I just find that while it's online, I don't find online stuff that pleasant to read, because for me, I like to go, oh, yeah, okay, and then you look over here and go back and forth, you know, and I find it harder. So I've enjoyed having this at home, and if somebody wanted to have this for a month, Catherine's been kind enough to make it available. I just make that offer, so if you...
I might take you up on it after the election is over.
After the election?
Yeah.
Well, after the election, I'll be home and be able to relax, too, but I'm taking a group to New York, and, yeah, we're heading out. I'm only on for 10 days, but I'm getting ready for it.
Yeah, we do need to be concerned about a quorum on the, the October meeting. I will be in Vietnam, you will be in New York.
No, no, aren't we talking about 20-something?
26.
Yeah, I come back on the 18th of October, and I am running over to Seattle quickly, but I think I'll be back for the, that next meeting.
I should be here.
I'm tentative, but I think I will be here.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I think also, I think Wendy's back.
Yeah, Wendy should be back.
And so, great, I believe.
Okay, any other, thanks for the good of the order.
Catherine?
As we hang on watching, there's a member of the commission that's never present, and I just wondered...
I think it's been talked about, and he might get a letter, and then maybe we'll just go from there.
Wendy's been talking to the mayor, I believe, it's clear that he doesn't have time for this event.
And you listened on another commission, too, and I just, I just think, I mean, I see the time you put in, I just think attendance is important, especially tonight.
Absolutely.
Talking about forums, so I just...
Yeah, I think the wheels are in motion for whatever...
Yeah, I think it is.
Okay.
I know Wendy's been definitely concerned.
Right.
We all have to miss occasional meeting, but...
Yeah. Okay, our meeting is adjourned.
Good job, Joel.